We'd like to express our thanks for the St. Petersburg College community, the leaders of the Tampa Bay area who have embraced education as a path to success for our region, our faculty and staff who work tirelessly each day for the benefit of our students in our community. We are thankful for our administrators who work each day in service to the students, and for the trustees and other volunteers who lend their guidance to the college. We give thanks for the students who make the college what it is today. Lord, allow the participants this morning to express themselves thoughtfully, treat one another civilly, and serve the college nobly. In your name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on our nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will start off with our recognitions.
If Vice President Jesse Turtle could come up and introduce Dr. Jesse Coraggio.
Good morning. Chair Kidwell, President Williams, and board members. I apologize, I forgot I was going to introduce the other Jesse. And I still haven't forgiven him. It'll take a while. I did negotiate some more salary for Katie. Dr. Jesse Coraggio from Community Foundation of Tampa Bay, they have been a wonderful partner, collaborator. They are part of our eco-educational system. I am proud to have them as part of our family. They continue to amaze and support. I'm very happy that they have an office now in St. Pete so that I can go and have a free cup of coffee. Thank you very much, Wilma. So I will turn it over to Jesse and Wilma. Thank you very much.
Well, Jesse mentioned family, and it certainly feels like family today. So I feel like I'm home. So it's great. Thanks for inviting us, allowing us to come speak to you today. Marlene Spalding, our CEO, unfortunately was not able to come and sense her regrets. We're actually having our board meeting in just about an hour and a half. So this gives us a little time to rush back over. But thank you for the time, we really appreciate it. For those that aren't familiar with the Community Foundation, we are literally a group of philanthropic givers into the community. We have over 1,200 funds in our community. At the end of last fiscal year, we had about $374 million in assets. And last year alone, we granted out $30.4 million into our local community in one of its biggest times of need here. I think there's a lot of similarities when I think about the work I did here at the college and the work I do now at the Community Foundation. There are similarities in our mission. We're both very interested in a prosperous, vibrant community, and we're both work very hard from our perspectives to create that. And as such, we have a number of initiatives. We go out in the community, we assess needs, and we look at the possible best ways to connect dollars with those needs in terms of the most strategic philanthropic opportunities as investments in our community. We think St. Petersburg College is one of those excellent choices for investments. So we're going to talk a little bit about a couple initiatives that we have that we partner, one of which we actually started a year ago. And I'm going to introduce my colleague, another SPC alumni, Wilma Norton.
Thank you. It does feel like home. It's good to see all of these faces. As the pandemic was starting, we were already talking about an epidemic. And Jesse was one of the first people to start talking about COVID and what we should expect. And the week before lockdown, I had a former colleague whose 11-year-old son died by suicide. And I said, "This is the epidemic I'm worried about at this moment." Obviously, COVID was something we all had to worry about. But we kept talking about how mental health is the next crisis, is the next pandemic. And our friends at the Love for Lawrence Foundation, which was founded by the Demmett family four years ago after they lost their son Lawrence to suicide, brought to our attention Mental Health First Aid, which is a one-day training course, just like CPR teaches you to react in a medical emergency. Mental Health First Aid teaches you to react to a mental health challenge or issue. One of my daughter's friends said to me, "I see you talking about this Mental Health First Aid thing. Is this like when you take CPR and then you have to wait for somebody to have a heart attack so you can pound on their chest?" And I said, "No, this is something you are going to use every day of your life." And so when we decided as the foundation, one of the things we could do to help our community was to get Mental Health First Aid training out to our nonprofits, our educational institutions, and our faith communities, we knew we couldn't do that on our own. And so we turned to you, to Ballentia, and to our friends at St. Petersburg College, and said, "We'll provide the money, and we'll provide the coordination, and we'll help get people into the classes, but we need a partner who can set up the classes, handle the payment, do all of those kinds of things." And for nonprofits and faith communities and educational institutions, we provide the training for free, but also are encouraging businesses and others to take the training. And so it's been a wonderful partnership. We at the foundation have committed $300,000 over three years to the training. We're about halfway through that. And we have now trained just a year in 1,200 people in Mental Health First Aid who now have the tools, if they see someone who's having a challenge, they know what to say to them, they know how to react to them, and they know how to encourage them to get the help that they need. So we're very proud of this effort, and we're so pleased that we're doing it arm-in-arm with our friends at CP College.
That's great.
So I'd like to share one more initiative that we've worked on together, and to give our compliments to your president, who really helped us achieve a national award that we're very excited about, that we'll share in just a minute. I'd like to bring up Chuck Tierden, our Director of LEAP Tampa Bay. Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, Dr. Williams, Board of Trustees. We appreciate this opportunity. And I think certainly this is another example of how partnerships are working toward getting people what they need. In this case, a good quality education and a credential to go out in workforce and join society in a way that's productive for their families and for their own career. So I'm pleased to have my colleague Matt Smith, who is our college completion coach for the LEAP Tampa Bay College Access Network, who is helping people get back into school, many of those coming to SPC, to finish their education credentials and move on to the next step in their life. So as Jesse mentioned, this network, we often describe it as a "we," not an "it," because the LEAP network only exists to accelerate and amplify the work of places like SPC, Pinellas County Schools. And there are a number of people in this room that are part of the LEAP network, so we're very proud of that. Jesse alluded to, and in fact, you will have, thanks to Rebecca, you will have in front of you, I believe, a list of most of the people that are participating on a regular basis from St. Petersburg College in the LEAP network. I think that there are a number of others that touch the work of the network in a very positive way, and we're just pleased to share this with all of them. As Jesse alluded to, it was Dr. Williams' letter of nomination that allowed LEAP to recently be named, this is going to be a trick, we need balance, the National College Attainment Network's Local College Access Member of the Year. So national. And we certainly are hoping for a photo opportunity to help you folks celebrate that, because again, this is our award for all of the members and you folks. As a founding member of the work here in Pinellas County, we just are so appreciative of all the time, effort, energy, and expertise that your team puts in. So thank you once again for the partnership, and we look forward to many years of success and many students getting what they need.
Yes, thank you.
We're going to take a couple photos, one with our big check and one with the award.
Okay, one more. You certainly deserve to hold that. And so we hold the letter, and then, oh, okay. And we just wondered if you have one for all the folks that have been involved with LEAP to jump up here. What do you think? We love a good photo. Take too much of your time today.
Thank you for all you do and the support that you provide our communities, especially those who are trying to change their lives. And that is exactly what you do. So thank you so much. It's been a pleasure.
Moving on, we have some comments. I will start. The one thing I'd like to say is I was fortunate enough to be able to participate in the St. Pete College table at the Good Burger Awards. We had great representation. Dr. Griffith was up for an award. We had, one of our students, Devon Miller, was up for an award. We were up for a few other awards. I was there with, Jesse Turtle was there, Debbie Swink was there, we had, Dr. Hubbard was there. We had great representation. It was a lot of fun. Kind of an outdoor event where everybody could interact, so it wasn't a, just kind of in a room with a bunch of tables you sat around. Very interactive. We represented very well, had a great time, and that's the kind of event that shines a spotlight on us in a very, very positive way. So that's what I have. Do any other board members have anything?
No, I know it flashed up before, but all of the publicity that I wanted to congratulate on St. Pete Gibbs campus and our urban garden and the expansion of that, it's been wonderful to see, especially in this time when we're talking about underserved populations and food deserts that we have, that the college is doing something. We often, I know Jesse and I talk a lot about the wraparound services that the college has to provide for, to keep our students engaged and healthy. And if you haven't seen the news come out in the past few weeks, besides the urban garden and the work that's being done there, and I know that's not the technical right word for it, the food pantry expansion on campuses and the partnerships that we have with other nonprofits, that just goes very far to help our students be successful and give them that needed boost that they need. So congratulations on that.
That's great.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Chair, if you don't mind, I'd like to briefly get Jesse Turtle up to the podium to share with us and celebrate Bill McLeod, who today, I believe, is winning the James L. Wattenberger Award. And I just wanted Jesse to recognize him, make sure we all had a chance to give congratulations and honor Bill McLeod, who does so much for this college over the years.
Thank you, Trustee Stonecypher. Bill McLeod is a longtime Foundation Board Member. He is an SPC alum. He's an advocate for our Gibbs Junior College Alumni Association. And he's just an all-around nice guy. So when this award came up, it was a natural to nominate Bill, to represent the college. It is a Florida College System Award, voted on by the college system and the college presidents. He is receiving his award today at 2:30. When I called him, he was literally speechless. It was really, those are wonderful, great calls. And Bill is just so unassuming, but when he speaks, you listen, because you know it's coming from knowledge and from passion for this college. They do a golf tournament every single year to raise money for the Gibbs Junior College Scholarship. And he just does these things on his own. He really is kind of the epitome of an SPC titan. So thank you, Trustee Stonecypher, for recognizing Bill McLeod. We need more of those types of board members and those types of advocates for the college. So thank you, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Jesse.
Mr. Chair, just to piggyback on that, Mr. McLeod is not only a good advocate for the college, but the entire community. He's just a good gentleman, mentors, does a lot. The Gibbs Junior College legacy would be dead without him, honestly. I mean, it would have died. They were having meetings, and they were not making any impact in terms of trying to push that legacy along and continued to push, push, and push. But he came up with a golf tournament and so many other things. This guy's been a giant in business worldwide, and to come home and to do great things in this community, I'm just so proud to even know this man. He always returns your phone call, don't care what he's doing, where he's at. A person that's accomplished so much in business in our community. This is honestly, is a great thing that they're doing it. But I mean, he doesn't, he's one of these people that doesn't look for awards and accolades. He just does what's right, and I'm proud to know him, and I'm proud that he's a friend of this college.
Thank you for your comments. That's great. Awesome, Jesse. President Williams?
All right. Well, Jesse stole my first thing to brag about. You know, James Wattenberger was, you know, one of, he's the father of the community college system. And so it really is a big deal that for the state of Florida, our Foundation Board Member was recognized. And I can't say anything different than what has been said about him. He is amazing. So for students to brag on, three of our Health Services Administration baccalaureate students are actually participating in a collaborative virtual discussion, which is an international discussion about health and safety here. And so it's on global perspectives, and so they'll be working with people from China and all over the place, and to be a part of that is a real big deal. Our model UN, Victorious in DC, they were one of a few colleges to receive the top honor of outstanding delegation. And one of, one of our students, two of our students actually, Angela Lee and Yedira Rivers, were recognized by members of their committee as outstanding delegates in the committee. And so we have a lot to be proud of our students. Our faculty, STEM Director Erica Moulton was inducted into the Explorers Club. Professor Jonathan Barnes was invited to juror for the Emerging Artist category at the Gasparilla Professional Festival of Arts. Professor Greg Berg's book, Independence Day 1921, from his World War I novel manuscript, was published. Professor Shelby Rosengarten is leading a virtual study abroad with Northern Ireland this fall, and Professor David Liebert is conducting a virtual study in the winter term in Greece, with Greece. Our college nursing of faculty, we're going through our accreditation right now for the baccalaureate program, and so that's going to happen between the 15th and the 19th. And we are getting ready to host FAMU tomorrow, which is going to be great. The band and a lot of their folks will be here. I think we have over 100 Pinellas County School students who will be joining us in that, in that initiative. So I was very proud of that. And then our own Tarpon Springs Collegiate High School. Last month, we bragged about them earning an A grade. As of yesterday, I believe, Dr. McCall sent something regarding our accreditation. We're accredited by Cognia. They received the School of Distinction Award through the Accreditation Engagement Review. So they're being reviewed for accreditation, and they received an award, and an award of distinction. And so very, very proud of that. And I believe that is all that I have to share that's happened big time since we saw you last month.
That's all?
That's all. That's all.
Thank you for that. The meeting is now open for public comments. Do we have any blue cards?
No.
We do not. Do we have any members of the public that would like to make a public comment? All right. Back to the board meeting. We need to review and approve the minutes for October. Do we have a motion to?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. Gardner, do you have a report this month?
I do. Good morning, Chair Kidwell, trustees, and Dr. Williams. I draw your attention to the board memo that I put on your desk. This is an update on the Adjunct Faculty Union, SEIU, and collective bargaining, and our notice of impasse that we received last week. So as you know, collective bargaining has been ongoing with SEIU since March of 2020 to put in place a collective bargaining agreement proposed. CBA was rejected by the board late last year, and we reconvened sessions in 2021 with the guidance provided by the board and executive session. On November 5th, we did conduct a collective bargaining meeting with a mediator at the request of the union. There was some consensus on many of the articles, but there's two areas that were not acceptable. And so there's more details on your memo on that. On November 11th, the union notified the commission that we're at an impasse, so the bargaining will cease pending a hearing in front of the special magistrate on the two issues that are outstanding. We will certainly keep you apprised on the next steps. They'll have to set a session with the special magistrate to hear the facts and information. We'll be conferring with our labor attorney and our labor firm. Keep the board apprised as to any developments and scheduling of that hearing with the magistrate. And there may be some consideration of having another shade meeting, but at this point, there's nothing for the trustees to do.
Madam Counsel, I just have one question, Mr. Chair, if that's okay?
Yep.
When the magistrate rules, we still have the authority as a board to reject or keep. And I see it's in this memo, but I just want to be publicly on the record, that we have the authority to either accept or deny and move forward with our negotiations, right?
Yes, when the magistrate makes a decision, is a recommend decision, if there is no rejection of it by the board within 20 days, then it becomes a decision. If we reject it, then the board has, you know, that ability to say we go back to bargaining. In other words, we are not compelled to take the final decision of the magistrate.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Moving on to our first strategic focus presentation, we have Dr. Deanna Stenford, Dean, College of Health and Sciences, and Ms. Ashley Lake, Academic Program Director.
Good morning.
Good morning.
President Williams, Chair Kidwell, and members of the Board of Trustees, thank you for allowing us the time today to come to, to present to you a very exciting program that we have with a partnership in our community. We are presenting to you the Associate Degree in Surgical Services. My name is Deanna Stenford. I am the Dean of the College of Health Sciences, and I have with me today our very new Program Director for the Surgical Services, that we're very excited that she's come on board to join our team. How we developed this program and this partnership, BayCare has approached us in the past to discuss with us their need of their future growth in their surgical services, and their dire need of replacing some of their surgical employees in their area. And as they're growing and they're seeing the future growth of surgical services across the county, what is it that we can do so that we can help them with their employment? So during this time, we also had another challenge in our area that the accreditation, which we call ARC for Surgical Services, has put forth the requirement that all programs were no longer going to be able to have a certificate program, but they were required to go with an associate degree. So their level of education increased. So then that's why BayCare came to us at the college and said, "What can we do to get an associate degree for surgical services to be able to help our community members?" Through the partnership of BayCare, we created the program that allowed them to choose some of their employees that they sponsored to enhance their educational future and to change their lives. Some of the discussions that we had, we talked about curriculum design, financial support, and the need to develop the program and to have a program that was sustainable. We outlined the curriculum and the time commitment for their students. We determined what would be a good time to start the program and when cohorts would be accepted into each of the future classes. And then, of course, the big question was the financial support, because starting up a surgical tech program is a very expensive endeavor. So the first thing that we did was we went out to look at what the job postings were. And even though we're looking at our Pinellas County, we have 1,258 postings currently, or this was in March of 2021, we needed to begin to address a way that we could start to chip away at that. And we determined the best way to do that would be to start a partnership with BayCare, and then as future growth projected, we could reach out to other partners in our community. So we decided on the first class size for our very first cohort. These students began this past August. They're completing the first semester of their general education prerequisite courses. BayCare has identified that they wanted 12 students in the first cohort until we could get our legs under us and make sure that we were doing everything properly so that we could roll out the program for future class size of cohorts of 18 as we go forward. So we will be working with a new group of students coming January to prepare them for their admission to start the second cohort in the fall, and that'll be 18 students in the next cohort. So the fall semester, we will actually have two cohorts going at one time. Typical cohort size for a program like this has a challenge with each of the programs, and that is the experience of surgical experiences in the hospital. Unlike nursing and some of our other programs that we can do simulation, we're not able to do that within this program. So we have to be able to have the sites to rotate with specialty surgeries for each of the students, and that's an accreditation requirement. So as the program rolls out, we will continue to determine the workforce needs and the availability of surgical cases that we can identify, so that then we can reach out to other medical facilities to see if we can replicate the same partnership with other facilities. Something that was really nice with BayCare is from the very beginning, we approached this as a team approach. And so even our first information session and also our orientations was a team approach that BayCare conducted with us through virtual and Zoom. The curriculum that we outlined, after the students are accepted into the program, now that it is a degree requirement, it is a five semester program. So they will take 25 hours of, or 25 credits of Gen Ed, and then an additional 39 credits in surgical services. As a total- It's a total of 64 credits for a typical degree. You see here the challenge that I was speaking of, the clinical rotations, that's the hardest thing in the program that we deal with. And that means that each student has to go through 90 surgical specialties and additional 30 general surgeries. So when you couple that with all of those students in the medical facilities, that's our biggest challenge. And that really does drive the size of the class across the state. We did research all of the other programs across the state, and a typical sized program With the help of BayCare funding and also our wonderful construction facilities area here at the college, we were able to construct a surgical lab. The surgical lab is in the second floor of the Health Education Center. It used to be the respiratory care area. And so we have one side of the laboratory now that is operating with two surgical suites. And it has an open bay so that the classroom can actually view any of the demonstrations on the other side. The classroom is large enough that we can actually have two cohorts in the classroom at one time. And as I said, the biggest expense with this type of program is the startup program. And with the generosity of BayCare, they have donated a lot of the setup equipment for us. As they renovate their surgical suites and their facilities, they then give us their, what they call wood equipment, but it's usually very state-of-the-art equipment. So we're really thinking that this is going to be the nicest state-of-the-art facility for laboratory for surgical services in the state. The one thing that is also that we've incorporated is an area that we can do, even though we can't do simulation for patient count, but we can do laboratories experience, and we have a simulation area and a viewing area so that the faculty can view and evaluate students as they're going through their procedures so that they're really well-prepared before they get into the clinical site and the operating rooms. Financial contribution is a big stumbling block, as I said, with any new program. BayCare came to the table and gave us funding for partial funding for the program director and then also gave us funding for two brand-new surgical lights that are over the beds. Each of those are $14,000, just to give you an idea of how much that they stepped up for us. They've also contributed over $100,000 in various types of equipment and material for the program. And then they have a future projection through the end of this year of an additional $270,000, not only in equipment, but also they're helping us out with some accreditation fees to get the process rolling with that. St. Pete College has also contributed some of the funding for a clinical coordinator and adjunct faculty coming forward. The equipment orders that we have to come in for the students in the area of $30,000 plus. And I can't help but to acknowledge the construction crew and Rodney's group that has done an amazing job on the construction for the two classrooms, one being the laboratory and the other classroom. We're really excited for you to see it. Once it gets finished, we're going to have the clinical educators onsite, and we invite you to come for an event that we will have so that you can see just how beautiful the services are going to be there. So, and Rodney, thank you. It is really amazing. One other thing that BayCare has identified is a clinical coordinator to help Ms. Lake with our clinical rotations. The same person who is over the coordinator, their Earn As You Learned Nursing Program, is the person who will be working with her to ensure that and help organize all of those clinical rotations across all of the various BayCare facilities to make sure the students get those experiences in the surgical suites. I would like to introduce Ms. Ashley Lake. I tease her all the time because I say I bow down to her when she walks in the hall. We were so excited and thrilled to be able to have her here. She comes to us from Georgia, has a wealth of information on the surgical area clinically and also in the educational realm. And we were so thrilled. She has hit the ground running. We've already applied for accreditation packet to start that process. She is feverishly in her office, working, getting the student orientation. She's already rotated and been in the surgical suites throughout the county in BayCare because her first thing to BayCare was, when I get here, I really want to be able to teach how you want them to be taught. And I think it's important that I scrub in with you, that I can see what you're doing. And so she's already made those rounds and she continues to make those rounds. So I don't doubt that the program is going to be one that you're going to be very, very proud of, and she will do an outstanding job with that. So we appreciate your support immensely. I can't wait until we can give you the next update. And I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Ashley so she can talk to you about the vision in the future.
Good morning, Dr. Williams. Good morning, board. And thank you so much, Deanna, for spearheading this. She has worked so diligently, excuse me, on this. When I came in, I was like, okay, now what do I have? And she literally has done the groundwork, so I just have to keep building. And she said, my name is Ashley. I've been in Georgia for forever, so excuse my twang. I got a little. So I just want to talk about the demand for surgical techs in the area. I think one of the main things that is going on is a lot of times, when it comes to our baby boomers, they're getting older, okay? And as we get older, things that we used to treat, such as with pain pills or injections, such as that arthritic knee, now those arthritic knees are now requiring knee replacements. So you have this great population of baby boomers, if you don't know, is our second-largest generation, where they used to be able to take ibuprofen and go jump on the boat. Now they need a knee replacement. So who do we get to actually help these physicians and the staff operate on these patients? You need surgical techs. And as Deanna showed in her previous slides, there is a tremendous amount of need for surgical techs in the Pinellas County area. Also, there have been great advances in medical technology, so some of the procedures that you used to have to go to the actual hospital for, doctor offices are performing those, as well as a lot of outpatient surgery centers are popping up everywhere. So you need qualified and competent staff to be able to assist those surgeons with those areas. So I'm just grateful and I applaud BayCare and St. Petersburg College for realizing that this need is developing in this area before it gets out of hand where we can't control and actually treat our own patients within the community and having to send them out to other areas. So I definitely commend the college and BayCare for recognizing this need. When it comes to my vision for the ST graduates at SPC, my goal is to have the graduate, ST graduates of SPC to be highly regarded within the community. When people are looking for surgical techs, qualified surgical techs, they call me or they call the college to say, hey, do y'all have any graduates that are not working? We want those. And I want people in the community, when they hear that this person graduated from St. Petersburg's College, St. Petersburg's College, excuse me, Surgical Services, that they know that they're getting someone that is competent and highly qualified. And thank y'all.
Thank you. We'll have any questions that you may have for us?
Just a comment. Welcome, Ashley, and congratulations to both of you for building this up from the ground up. This is the type of corporate community partnership that we're becoming known for, and this one sounds outstanding. So thank you for all your work.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
Chair, can I ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
You may have mentioned it and I missed it. What's the starting salary typically for this accreditation, this degree?
When they start working or? When they start working, it's usually about 19, 20 an hour.
Salary. So 19, 20 an hour after they graduate?
Yes, sir. And then once they get, once they graduate, they have to take their national certification.
Right.
And then, once they take that, then they can look for employment. And there are some hospitals and surgery centers that may hire them certified, but they're usually like a $3 to $4 pay decrease.
Sure, okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just wanted to congratulate you so much. This is what I, Dr. Williams is tired of me talking about our healthcare partnerships and the need to build those. BayCare in and of itself is the largest employer in Pinellas County, and we obviously have Orlando Health and Advent and others in HCA who all are seeking employment. And to your point with the baby boomers and the population in Pinellas County especially, this is one of the greatest areas in which the college can serve our employers and our community and ensure that our students are employed. And so by looking, we talk a lot and Jesse Turtle and I talk a lot about the nursing needs in the community. And while we are completely understaffed with nursing, we are understaffed with all levels of hospital and medical care employees. And a surg tech starting at $40,000 a year is an amazing career path. And the same way, I have asked Dr. Williams to address it from the college side, I speak often to the hospital folks and ask them to address it and develop internal programs of how we can start and how the college can help when these employees go into the hospitals and start perhaps as a patient tech and then working up in other areas, or surg tech and then moving over to other areas. There is so much upward mobility opportunity for employment within a hospital and medical system. So thank you, thank you, thank you. And I would continue to challenge you all to identify whether it is our coding program, our medical coding program, the surg tech, our patient techs, all of these hospital-based and medical-based jobs are immediate employment opportunities for our residents. And so I continue to challenge you all to identify these opportunities and anything I can do to help, please let me know.
Thank you. Thank you.
Very good. Our next presentation is from Dr. Misty Kemp, Executive Director of Retention Services.
Good morning. Thank you, Chair Kidwell, members of the board, and Dr. Williams. It is a pleasure to be here with you today and to brag about a certain number of folks and programs that we offer to our community. My name is Misty Kemp. I am the Executive Director, and I have had the pleasure to serve retention services for the last four years at St. Petersburg College. What I'd like to share with you is when I joined this department as the Executive Director in October of 2017, this was retention services. We were 21 strong, a small but mighty team with an operational budget of just around $2 million. We provided services on five of the 11 campuses and centers throughout the district. As a result of the support from St. Petersburg College, our community, the excellent work from our grants team, and the support from our foundation, I'm happy to share with you today, this is retention services. We've now tripled in size. We are a team of 69, strong and growing. We have an operational budget of over $4 million, and we are at seven of the 11 campuses and centers district-wide. When our team got together early in 2020, we started looking at this opportunity for a pathway. Many of our students don't realize that as early as third grade, they can enter into a St. Petersburg College program. And through the support, they can graduate with little to no out-of-pocket expense. In doing so, today I have the pleasure to bring 10 of these programs to you, to discuss them in greater detail and explain the work and the opportunities that they're providing to our students. As I mentioned, we started this pipeline as early as third grade. So how do we communicate this? Let's walk you through that path. We have a program started through the National Achiever Society and our Centers of Excellence. This is funded through the state of Florida. This gives us an opportunity to work with students on out-of-class supports, academic endeavors. Many of our students go on to participate in the Brain Bowl, and they get to compete in five different areas. The top competitors in those areas for the National Brain Bowl actually get major awards from the state colleges. It's an opportunity for them not only to prepare themselves academically, but they receive supports in social, professional development, growth, and networking. They get to work with students all over the state to learn how they became part of this program and to learn about the opportunities the state and St. Petersburg continues to offer. The next one is our college reach-out program. Oh, let me do remind you, a fun fact. Did you know our own Dr. Williams was a Centers of Excellence Director? Not only was she our Centers of Excellence Director, she also went on to help support and grow our crop program, overseeing this opportunity for students in our middle and our high schools to be able to get intensive wraparound academic services. Not only do they benefit from after-school tutoring, access to our campus facilities, but they also have the opportunity to do some social networking with other colleges in the state. It gives these students an opportunity to realize the college is in their path, and there are supports and programs that will do so, not only offering them the tuition assistance that they need, but also getting those textbooks and materials front and center. So once a student graduates from high school, we know that we start looking at summer melt. How do we keep our students engaged? How do we let them know what opportunities are available for them? Our Summer of Success program is a six-week introduction to college. It gives them academic, social, networking opportunities. They participate in two classes on campus. We are five campuses wide, serving close to 125 students just before the pandemic. You can see, we remain strong moving forward with just under 100 students. Not only do they get the two classes, they'll have four credits, full tuition paid, books, scholarships, access to financial aid literacy training. They get assistance applying for college. And as you can see, many of them went on to become Titans. This is just a little more information about the programs that we have up and through their high school graduation. So how do we keep them tight and strong and moving on? We have some programs here that I am excited to brag about, and that's our TRIO. TRIO is one of those programs provided by the Department of Education that gives millions of dollars nationwide to help underrepresented minorities, to help students with disabilities, to help those first-generation or first-time-in-college students pertain, excuse me, pursue their academic endeavors. We have the pleasure of introducing three of those. Now, it is slightly debatable that C-Campus may be coming out of it, but when you hear about the supports that it provides, you can see why we brag about this. Let's talk about Student Support Services. By the way, it's been here for over 24 years, established in 1997. And guess who started that program? None other than our Dr. Williams. Absolutely excited to share the enrollment endeavors and the success of our students. From there, how many of you might have thought, gosh, college might have been a little bit easier if I'd had some support with childcare? If I knew that my child was in a safe and secure place, that I had the financial support to get them to and from, then I could focus as a student in classes. Well, guess what? Two years ago, we were awarded with a C-Campus. This is our childcare vouchers that is supporting 10 partnerships right now. Unfortunately, this opened during the time of COVID, March of 2020, and many centers were closing. But I'm excited to say we are moving a pace of centers opening up, and we are getting students placed at 100% of their childcare cost covered. All right. Just recently, we were notified by the Department of Education that we got another TRIO award, and this is the Education Opportunity Centers. This provides adults 17 and older who were not quite ready for college out of high school an opportunity to come in, work on some skills attainment, maybe finish their GED, get some basic computer skills. It offers them intensive financial aid one-on-one, one-to-one literacy opportunities. We'll help them with scholarship applications. The goal is to get these folks comfortable, ready, and employed, or, excuse me, accepted into colleges. Well, yes, this is an opportunity to serve any student who wants to go to any college. I'm sure once they've had the opportunity to work with our wonderful team, they're going to stay a Titan. This program was presented to us in 2017 and is one that is near and dear to my heart and several others who are working on this. And this is the Titans Up program. This works with our students who are scoring 70 or below in the cognitive scale. So this is cognitive disability specific. And one of the things about this program is it provides us extreme wraparound services. Not only do they get a career and a mentor, they also get a job coach. They get someone who goes with them to their place of employment, works with them to ensure that they're able to make a living wage. I will brag about this program because we graduated the largest class in our first year of operation. This is a picture of our four graduates, and I'm happy to say, two of them have graduated from supported employment and they're working independently. One is getting ready to graduate and be working independently, and the other one was hired here locally at the Ennis Brook Golf Course and has been working independently since graduation. Not only is this program doing well, it is expanding. We are writing our stepping application. We'll be expanding to the Clearwater Campus, adding not only hospitality and rooms management, but looking into the digital arts. This is going to bring us from 600,000 to 900,000 in supports for our students. All right. These last two slides are going to cover some information about two of our strategic initiatives, and that's the support we have for our Black African-American males and our Black African-American females. Let's start with this page and talking about our males. Last year, the board approved us supporting or putting in the application. Last year, the board approved us supporting or putting in the application to support our Brother to Brother program. We received that Social Action Award, giving us an opportunity to reinvigorate Brother to Brother. Now, it started in October of last year, but that did not stop our program director. Erin brought on 40 students in a Zoom environment and not only retained them, but has now doubled the program's size. We have men not only working on academic and career endeavors, but our own alumni from Brother to Brother have come back to be peer mentors, supports, and they continue to work with our students on networking and job placement opportunities. Now, what if you're not quite ready for an AA? What if you know you want an industry certification, you know you want to retrain? You can be part of our Pitch Program. This is in partnership with the city, our cohort of champions. This gives our young men an opportunity to get credentialed in certifications, they can do quick job training if they need to switch a job, they need to reskill. I want to point out the folks that are standing on what would be your right-hand side of the slide. The two gentlemen that are dressed in the blue scrubs are actually the Baptiste Brothers. They graduated from our Clinical Medical Assistant Program with the supports through Pitch. They were then recognized by the Florida Department of Education for their work serving on the front line. The picture on the bottom is them in their scrubs actually assisting the front lines during the COVID testing, and then went on to continue to support the county efforts. Last but certainly not least is our Women on the Way program. Now, here's a trick for you. How many years have we been providing services to our students? 40-plus years. That's right. Our Women on the Way program has been with us for over 40 years now, with two of those dedications coming, one here at the Tarpon Campus for the Dr. Marie Edmonds, and one at the Clearwater Campus, the dedication for Dr. Vilma Zalewski. All right, now, as I'm getting ready to close, what I would like to do is take a moment to recognize the folks in the audience who help support me, because we know it takes a village, and St. Petersburg definitely brings its finest. So if you work in Retention Services, could you please stand so that you may be recognized? I'd like to point out over here to my right is none other than our Pitch Program Coordinator, Mr. Ernest Gant. Just walking in behind me is our Brother to Brother Program Manager, Mr. Aaron Keith. Over here, over my left shoulder in the doorway, is Crystal Blackburn. She helps support our students through interpreting and captioning. I have Ms., Ms., oh my goodness, Keisha Blue. I'm so sorry, I was about to say Nikki, I was looking awkward. So Ms. Keisha Blue, who is in charge of our crop, our college reach-out program. Ms. Shirley Crumley, our Women on the Way Program Coordinator. And my right hand, Ms. Nikki Wright, she is the Project Manager for Retention Services. And that concludes my presentation. I welcome any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation. I think that was a great synopsis of the many things that you all do. And I just want to say, I think, you know, it would be so much easier if we had one program that offered general assistance to everyone, but that's not effective, and that's not what we need. And so the work you all are doing, being so specific to what certain students at our colleges' true needs are, based upon background, based upon whatever it is, where they are in that moment, and what will take them to a degree and graduation, sometimes gets pretty niche-specific. And so I realize the difficulty in that. I thank you for everyone in this room and those that aren't here who help with this. It's a logistical, I was going to say nightmare, but it's difficult. I can only imagine the difficulty in trying to help as many people as possible, but doing it in the most effective way as possible. So thank you, and really glad you were able to share today.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda. We're going to remove the Tarpon Springs Real Estate parcel item for consideration today, and we'll address it at a future meeting. Having said that, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda without that item?
So, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? If that passes.
Mr. Chair, now that we pulled that item from the agenda, is there dated any time that we could have a workshop on that?
I think we are going to, yes, I think we will address that at a future date. I don't know that that has been decided.
All right. I'd like to see if we could have a workshop on it, so that we could get answers from the developer and wherever else as well.
Perfect, and I think we can do that.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just because we didn't take comments on the consent agenda, I just wanted to acknowledge the QRT training that we've just approved and the dollars associated with Power Design. I know we talk a lot about the trades in the construction industry, and our lineman program is a wonderful example of that. Power Design established as its own local employer, its own training program internally, and they bring in prospective electricians from all over the country to live in St. Pete and work and go through their own journeyman program before they send them back out to work. So I was thrilled to see this partnership, and just congratulations to Valentina and the workforce team on continuing to identify these opportunities to expand our services for local employers and ensure that we're getting our both graduates and residents in jobs that they can be employed in. So, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd echo that sentiment. I recently sent our workforce folks to a family that has a foundation and wanted to do some things, and I've got nothing but rave reviews back about Ms. Barry and her staff and what they've done to create a partnership outside of this college that will affect students, families, and the college long-term. So, kudos and good job.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. We have informational reports for your review, and there are no proposed changes to the Board Rules Manual, so now we have the president's report.
Thank you, everyone. My legislative update is letting everyone know that this week is special session, and we have had some representation there. Also, to let you know, we've made a lot of rounds over the last couple of weeks. We met with President Simpson, Speaker Sprouse, Chair Lotvala, Chair De Segly, Chair Rouson, Hooper, Speaker Renner, Chair Diaz, and Chair Broxson. And we've had a chance to bring our requests forward and explain what we're focusing on. Trustee Cole, you talked about nursing. That has been the major discussion in every single meeting that we have had about what will the colleges do to expand nurses and get more nurses across that stage and into the jobs. And so we are planning to host a collaborative lab that all of you are invited definitely to participate in with our healthcare leaders, our nursing deans, community members, to talk about what are the true needs for the Tampa Bay region. Right now, we're really focusing on Pinellas County and Pasco. Those are the two major partners. And because we work with many of the same hospital systems, we thought it would be better for us to come together. Trustee Butts is going to be intricately involved in that and moving that forward. So just want to make sure you all were aware of that. Another issue for higher ed right now is just workforce, just trying to make sure that we get people across the stage, whether it's a certificate or a college degree, and making sure that what we are offering often leads to a high-wage-paying job. And so the state is focusing on our programs and what we're offering. And so is Dr. Lee Altraff. He's looking at the coursework that we're offering, as well as the state. We've already had some dialogue with the state on those courses and programs, so we'll be bringing those forward, asking us to only offer those programs that lead to high-wage-paying jobs or programs that we can defend that are on the pathway to a high-wage-paying job. We still have to have some laddering and steps in between. Right now, the state has pretty much said the general estimates for our budget's pretty high right now. Hopefully, it will continue that way, and some of those funds will come to the colleges. That would be fantastic. And earlier this month, we did host another legislative delegation meeting, well, actually last month, at our Seminole Campus, and everything went well. We had Representative Lotvala and Senator Hooper at the Allstate Center to look at our safety programs, and they were very excited about being able to see the simulation. If you haven't been down there, you should go. Maybe that's a trip we should all take, for you to really see how much time public servants have to respond to a difficult situation. You'll often miss it, and they got a chance to see some of that. We talked about the Nursing Collaborative, and in January, where AFC is hosting the trustee legislative fly-in to come to that, and so we'll be bringing you there. We have graduation on December the 11th. We have two grad walks. We're not going to have the regular graduation program, but we'll do the grad walks, one at St. Pete Gibbs and one at Clearwater. I think the trustees have been given that information. Our goal in May is to go back to the regular graduation ceremonies at the TROP. And so that is my report, and I have nothing else to offer.
President, you said you spoke to the speaker and the president. Did they give you indication on what the revenue estimating was?
They did not speak to me about that in detail, but it's definitely higher than they expected. That's my report.
All right. The next meeting of the board will be a workshop, January 25th, at the Epicenter. And, we need a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn? So moved.
Good meeting, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
It was too far.